2025. Please note that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the Legislative Chamber alongside an automatic external defibrillator. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. And we will now commence the Board, the County Board of Equalization meeting. Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry. We talked about it five minutes ago. I'm sorry, I forgot. I, I want to give a point of personal privilege to Clerk Ash, please, for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, as you know, there's a lot of people behind the scenes that help not just the county run, but these meetings run as well. And one of them, a big, a person who plays a huge role in helping our meetings run is sitting behind the scenes, helps broadcast our meetings. He's been doing it since the 80s. I think he's been, was, took a few years off, but Chris Craddock. Unfortunately, last week, his wife passed away, Karina. Some people knew her as Lovey. And so I just wanted to, I know all of us extend our condolences to Chris and his family. And I think I just talked to Commissioner friend and Garcia last week about doing a moment of silence for her before the meeting started. So I just asked that we do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And our thoughts and prayers are with Chris and his family at these ti, at this time. We will now commence with the County Board of Equalization meeting. And Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson.
President.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Fahy.
President.
Commissioner Garcia is absent. Commissioner Rogers is here, but absent at the moment. Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
And Mr. Chair.
Here. The first items of business on the agenda are items A and B. A being the approval of the minutes for the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, July 8th, 2025. And B being a call for a meeting and set Tuesday, July 29th, 2025, as a date for a hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Do I have a motion and a second?
No move. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Fahy.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The next item of business is our Resolution C through J, I believe, if that's not incorrect. And since there is no need for executive session, this motion can include adjournment. Do I have a motion and a second?
No move. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Fahy, second by Commissioner Morgan. Anyone present or on Zoom wishing to speak to these resolutions? If not, I see none, let's, please vote.
No, Mr. Chair, just to note, C through K. And we, and we wanted adjournment as well? Is that, I'm sorry, that part I didn't catch.
C through K. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And with the motion and the second, is that okay?
And adjournment.
And adjournment, is that okay? Yep. Okay, thank you. Mr. Clerk.
All righty. Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Clerk. I have had a request from Commissioner Rogers to actually move the Board of Corrections' presentation and meeting until after we complete the Board of Commissioners. So do I have a, we'll now proceed to our Board of Commissioners meeting. And roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson.
President.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Fahy.
President.
Commissioner Garcia is absent today. Commissioner Rogers is absent at the moment. Commissioner Morgan and Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The first item of business are items 1A and 1B. 1A being approval of minutes for the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, July 8th, 2025. And 1B being approval of claims submitted for payment, payment process through Tuesday, July 22nd, 2025. Do I have a motion and a second?
No move.
Motion by Commissioner Fahy, second by Commissioner Morgan.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next item of business is our consent agenda on Board of Commissioners. With items A, with items A through T, I believe, do I have a motion and a second for discussion?
No move. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Fahy. Any discussions on these consent agenda items? Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Just for the record on a couple of these, item B is signature and acceptance of the 2025 High-Intensity Drug Trafficking Area. This is a 211,475 budgeted item. And I wondered if there was someone that could speak to this to give a little public record of what this actually does.
I don't believe Ms. Daubman is here from County Administration. Any, any input?
Maybe she's not here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Ms. Daubman, do you have, could you provide a little bit of context for the, for the agenda item?
Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Yes, this is for the Attorney's Office. And this is a regular, regularly occurring grant that we get awarded every year to the Attorney's Office to provide salaries.
Just a quick question here. It says it's a budgeted item. Budgeted to whom? I'm sorry, can you hear us?
Budgeted for what? I'm sorry.
Oh, it's a budgeted item. And whose budget?
It would be budgeted to the County Attorney's Office.
Yes, this is for the County Attorney's Office to support salary and bridge benefits for two attorneys.
Okay, thank you.
They get awarded this grant every year.
Right. Thank you. I don't know if this would qualify as like a supplementary budget item. Can you have some clarification on that? I just wonder why we have a budgeted item on a consent agenda that, not in the regular budget.
This is standard procedure. We've done it this way for everything. Commissioner, this is Patrick Bloomingdale, County Administrator. I'm not sure what your question is because this is standard procedure. This is what we always do when we put grants before the County Board for approval.
Oh, this is grant funded?
Well, yeah.
Oh, and what is the source of the grant?
Well, I didn't put it forward, but who?
This is, this is from the Nebraska State Patrol.
Thank you. That's all. On item I, it's a resolution to approve master service agreement with Avenue Insights and Analytics for online payment trial in the clerk of the district courts. And it's here from the chief deputy of the clerk of the district courts. Is there someone here that could give us a little background on that?
From the clerk of the district courts office.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I'm Paul Remball. I'm with the clerk of the district courts office under Crystal Rhodes. And we're the ones asking for the master service agreement.
Could you speak into the mic, please?
Sorry, is that a little?
Yeah.
I think, oh, I need to do this one.
Right, right, right.
Sorry. My name is Paul Remball. I'm with the clerk of the district courts office. And that, we're the office asking for the master service agreement.
Okay. So this item is master service agreement with Avenue Insights and Analytics for online payment trial. Could you explain a little bit what that does?
So what it does is it's going to give the clerk of the district courts office the ability to put payment links on the website and send to?
Sorry, Mr. Remball. There's nobody else in the queue if you'd like to continue?
Yeah, I just have a couple of quick questions, yeah.
Second time, go ahead.
Thank you.
It will allow us to put links on the website for people to make payments for copies, online notaries, or parenting classes without having to come down to the office or call in over the phone.
Okay. So I recall from my days as a lawyer that often you would seek payments from the clerk of the district court for like refunded bond payments?
Yes.
Would those be payments involved in this?
Not through this, no.
I'm sorry?
Not through this, no.
Okay. What kind of payments are we talking about?
This is for file copy request payments, parenting class payments, and online notary payments.
Okay. Title company, and I'm sorry, what, what others?
Notary.
Notary.
So online notary, parenting classes, and then copies of files.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there a price involved in this?
No, not on this one. It is, so it is paid for by the fees the person using the service pays. And it's $2.50 or 2.5% of the purchase, fairly basic credit card adjustment fee.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
And finally, item N, contract for federal grant funds to the Bridge Family Resource Connector Network to provide prevention and early intervention services to high, at-risk youth and families. And I think we have somebody here from Bridge. Is that right? Maybe you could just give us a quick overview, Marion, of the good work that you're doing.
Good morning. Happy to. Marion Fage, Executive Director of the Bridge Family Resource Connector Network. Well, we're really grateful for the opportunity to receive this grant and appreciate all the work that Kim Havakati and Abby Carbaugh did to help walk us through this process. This grant is going to help establish a net, expand and establish a network of family resource centers throughout Douglas County. So by utilizing and leveraging the existing work that's happening in partner organizations, we can add some fidelity to the navigation process, increase training opportunities, provide support service funds directly to families, provide access to central navigation, and provide more intensive case management and coaching through up to four partner organizations.
We just had a briefing recently on our attempts to help troubled youth and their families. And one of the statistics that we came up with was a lot of kids who are having a tough time.
One minute.
Don't feel that they have an adult to talk to. Is this addressed in some of the services that you provide?
Right. So the more intensive case management and coaching that happens in the partner organizations will be, will be able to do just that.
Great. Thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity.
That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Borgeson, you're next in the queue.
Thank you, Mary. I'm sorry. I just had a quick question on, will your work, will you be coordinating with Senator Terrell McKinney's legislative that passed about setting up juvenile assessment centers? For their 24/7 operations around the community, I think there was either four or whatever the number was. Would you, or have you already talked? And if not, would you please coordinate with them? Because to me, it would be, it would be a good partnership for you all.
Yeah, I agree 100%. We had conversations with Senator McKinney down at the Project Everlast space prior to the legislation passing. Subsequent exchanges, email, and I actually write, fashion handwritten notes. We've talked about the ability to do some of the similar things I just talked about with these, with these grant funds, to be able to provide some of those fidelity and oversight pieces, establish what a family resource center is in Douglas County. So, yeah, we would love.
Recording in progress.
We would love to partner further with Senator McKinney.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah. I am happy to get my steps in by going back and forth, but?
That's it for me.
Okay.
Thank you. I did have one other question for the clerk of the district court. On the fees, that will be the 2.99% of the purchase or 2.5, or $2.50, whichever is higher. And those are going to be placed or paid for by the purchaser. Was there, is there a specific credit card that we have to use? Or was this like going out for bid to utilize those payments? Because sometimes those fees are kind of crazy.
Yeah. So this is just a pilot project right now. Most of our county offices use Grant Street for this service. Grant Street is the company that most of us use in the county. And we actually use that for in-person processing. Grant Street was not able to give us any time until 2025, or 2026, excuse me, to even start talking about being able to get access to our folks. So Avenue is a pilot to see if they can, if, first off, that it's even reasonable for us to have this payment online option. I think most of us probably assume being able to pay online is pretty reasonable, but we don't know. And then at the end of the first year with this, we will then take a look at whether we want to continue with Avenue or if Grant Street can get us in for better, at which point that's when it would go out for bid, is my understanding.
Okay, all right. And that's a year-long pilot?
Correct.
And again, I, I get the conversations up with constituents that use the Treasurer's Office online.
One minute.
About the high fees that are paid. And so then they get upset and go in and pay it in person so they don't have to pay the fees.
Correct.
So anyway, if we could just watch that after we see if the pilot's going to work or not, I would appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Borgeson. And Commissioner Kavanaugh, this is your third time.
Thank you. I just have one quick question. Kim, I think the Bridge Family Resource Connection Network was covered in that report that you gave us the other day, wasn't it?
What was covered, Kim Havakati, Deputy County Administrator, what was covered in that report was the need for the navigation type of services.
Okay.
That are being done by the Family Resource Center.
So what I'm getting to is this is grant funded, and the source of this grant is what?
It, it was a federal earmark.
I'm sorry?
It was a federal earmark, and it is being administered through the Office of Juvenile Justice Delinquency Prevention.
Thank you.
Oh, thank, thank you, Commissioner Kavanaugh. Any other questions or points on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes.
On item G, there were just some small changes. We put the replacement item in your packet, but the signature page, the signatures had to be updated on that. And then the resolution was, in one of the paragraphs, the word "extension" was not included. So just a couple of small changes, no, no substantive changes, but we put a clean copy of item G in your binder for approval.
And we have a motion and a second. And with the enhancement, are there any other questions related to the consent agenda?
I just don't, Mr. Chairman, but in item G, it took my attention that the Douglas County Employee Retirement System was established on January 1st, 1963. And I looked up that resolution. It was authored by my father.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Kavanaugh. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion passes five to zero. Commissioner Rogers is absent at the moment.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And we have no unfinished business or new business, but we do have item, Roman numeral five, we have recognitions and proclamations. And I'd like to go through each one of these and maybe we can recognize all these folks as a group, if that's, if that's okay with the Board. Item A is a recognition of the following county employee who just retired, Vanessa Wagner. Vanessa worked for the Douglas County Health Department for 32 years. And obviously, we want to congratulate her and thank her for her service. I, B, item B is a recognition of the following county employee, retired county employee, Kimberly King, worked for the Douglas County Department of Corrections for 18 years. And thank her as well. Item C is a recognition of the following county employee who is retiring, Pamela Viser, worked for the Douglas County Health Center for 37 years. And thank her as well. And then recognition, item D, recognition of the following county employee retiring, Aoka Brannon. Aoka Brannon worked for the Douglas County Health Center for 30 years. These are milestones. I, I haven't been anywhere for 30 years except with my wife. So I don't know. I don't know if, that's pretty significant. Thank, I, I want to open it up to, to comments. And I believe, Commissioner Kavanaugh, you were first in the queue.
Thank you. This represents over 100 years in public service cumulatively. And all of these individuals worked in critical areas of county services. The Health Department, the Corrections Department, and the Health Center are some of the most important services that we provide to our citizens. The fact that they did this for such extraordinarily long periods of time is also noteworthy. Vanessa Wagner for 32 years, Kimberly King for 18 years, Pamela Viser for 37 years at the Douglas County Health Center, and Aoka Brannon for 30 years at the Douglas County Health Center. I wish they were here because we don't do enough to recognize the people who really provide direct services to the residents of Douglas County. And particularly, the Douglas County Health Center is probably the best service that we provide with our tax dollars to help people who probably couldn't get help anyplace else of this quality, who have serious disabilities. And we are very, very proud of what the Douglas County Health Center does, as well as the difficult job that the folks at the Corrections Department do, and the critically important job of the Health Department, particularly, most recently during the COVID crisis, when they provided us with such excellent service in helping combating, combating the pandemic. So a special shout out to all these folks. I wish they were here. And thank you for your public service. You've made our community better.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve by Commissioner Borgeson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Motion to approve these recognitions passes five to zero.
We'll now move to committee discussion and action. Under Section A, the Finance Committee, we have the budget report and monthly fee report as presented. Under Section G, Human Resources, we have the weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. And with that, we do have need for an executive session, but we're going to jump back to the Board of Comis, I didn't forget. We're going to butt, jump back in, in the agenda to the Board of Corrections and?
Mr. Chair, can we get a motion to recess out of the Board of Commissioners?
I, I, thank you, Mr. Clerk. I need a motion to recess out of the Board of Commissioners meeting?
No move.
Motion by Commissioner Fahy, second by Commissioner Morgan.
Let's do a quick voice vote. Commissioner Borgeson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Fahy.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion to recess as the Board of Commissioners passes five to zero at 9:26 a.m.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. We'll now commence with our Board of Corrections meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Fahy.
President.
Commissioner Garcia is absent. Commissioner Rogers is absent at the moment. Commissioner Morgan and Mr. Chair.
Here. First, we'll deal with the minutes. First item of business is item one, approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, June 24th, 2025. Do I have a motion and a second? Motion by Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Borgeson. Please vote. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The second item of business is the Director's Report from Mike Myers, Department of Corrections. Mike, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michael Myers, Director of Corrections, excuse me, for Douglas County. Before I get into my report, I do want to apologize. I didn't realize until this morning, when I was passing out your books, that the, the printouts got, weren't as clear. So my apologies for that. We will make sure that that is of better quality next time. Turning to enclosure number one, Administrative Services and Personnel. We completed our fiscal year in June. We were $13,733 under budget. $256,508 were spent on overtime in June. That was a decrease of about $55,000 from the previous month. Thankfully, we have seen a few months in a row of a decline. Over $870,000 in bond payments was processed by our records division. Seven officers below the rank of sergeant left employment in June, including one retirement. And on that note, I want to congratulate Darla May, Correctional Officer, who served us for many years, on her well-deserved retirement. And as of June 30th, we were 99% staffed among all Correctional Officer ranks. Enclosure number two, Community Corrections and Reentry Services. The Transitional Discharge Center and Sanction Center placed eight individuals in community corrections to save. corrections and saved a combined 100 jail bed days. Work release admitted 23 individuals. House arrest admitted 36 individuals. The Reentry Assistance Program, or RAP, admitted 17. Our reentry services and therapeutic communities in the jail, there were 85 individuals admitted to therapeutic community housing units. There are currently 121 individuals on the GED waitlist with 71 active students. 26 individuals were referred to intensive outpatient treatment, and 28 individuals received substance use disorder evaluations. Turning to pretrial services, there were 233 individuals placed on pretrial release. Over the course of the month, there was a total of 1,382 individuals supervised on pretrial release. 629 individuals participated in the 24/7 sobriety program. That, Commissioners, is a record high. 195 individuals were supervised via GPS monitors. That saved theoretically 4,633 bed days, which is also a record high. Pretrial release theoretically saved Douglas County $787,610 in detention costs in June. That is a record. Pretrial services staff are working with a new vendor for pretrial release software regarding several aspects of the program. A go-live date has been set for September 2nd. I'm pleased to announce a much more robust set of data elements will be available following the implementation of the new software. Enclosure number three, Compliance. Our regular reporting of all compliance-related data continues. Our PRIA, or Prison Rate Elimination Act, audit will occur either late this year or early next year. Our National Commission on Correctional Healthcare Audit, or NCHC, will occur in 2026 at a date to be determined. The American Correctional Association Audit will occur either in October or November of 2026. And the United States Marshal Service conducted an inspection in June and noted no concerns. Enclosure number four, Population. There were 1,313 admissions. There were 1,297 releases. Our high count for the month was 1,140, and our low count was 1,081. Our average daily population was 1,105. That's an increase of 34 individuals per day over the previous month. The average length of stay for inmates released in June, the overall average was 27 days. 52% of inmates stayed longer than 72 hours, and the average length of stay for those inmates was 51 days. 48% of inmates were released within 72 hours of being booked, and the average length of stay for those individuals was 1.3 days. There were 81 custodial sanctioned bed days. The U.S. Marshal population increased. The average daily felony population was 728. The average daily misdemeanor pretrial population was 142. Probation violations remain stable. 18% of our population were between the ages of 18 and 24. 65% of our population were minorities. 14% of our population were female, and 19% of our population were homeless or near homeless. Turning to enclosure number five, Medical and Mental Health. There were 1,054 intake screenings. There were 390 health and physical assessments. There were 31 emergency medical transports. Nine of those were by 911, excuse me, seven of those were by 911. There were 10 hospital admissions in June. The total days of hospitalization was 27. There were 26 off-site specialty medical appointments. There were 155 initial psychiatric assessments and 343 initial mental health assessments. 107 individuals were placed on suicide precautions. 214, which is a pretty high number for us, were placed on drug and alcohol detox protocols. There were two Board of Mental Health referrals approved. We had 16 individuals on the waitlist for the Lincoln Regional Center, and there were 18 individuals currently housed at the Lincoln Regional Center. One individual was administered a dose of Narcan or Ophi, in this case, it was Ophi. Enclosure number six, Security Operations and Honor Guard. Our Crisis Negotiation Team was deployed 12 times in June, several of which were in conjunction with our Emergency Response Team. Issues addressed included: working with mentally ill individuals who have been refusing basic hygienic care, to take showers; negotiating with an individual refusing to attend court; negotiating with an individual who had reportedly, who had reportedly potentially dangerous contraband; working with an individual who was refusing to come out from under her bed; and an individual who was hesitant to comply with hospital staff. Most incidents were resolved without the need for physical force. In a handful of cases, intervention from CERT was required to assure the objectives were safely achieved. No injuries occurred. Our Crisis Negotiation Team members completed training that covered various procedures, their equipment that they utilize, and team building. Our Correctional Emergency Response and Transport Team, or CERT, CERT team members trained on GRACY, which is a self-defense and survival tactics training, and on using our RAP restraint device. CERT was deployed nine times in June, all but one were in conjunction with CNT. Incidents included four court-ordered cell extractions for individuals refusing to appear in court, assisting with medically mandated showers, and an individual who was refusing to comply with suicide watch protocols. Most of the incidents did not require physical force, and no injuries were reported on the ones that did. Our area searches recovered items included social media usernames and passwords, cash app information, altered headphones, an unknown fluid in a nasal spray bottle, a white powdery substance, and homemade dice presumably used for gambling. Our Honor Guard was deployed on one occasion in June for the College World Series First Responders Recognition. Turning to enclosure number seven, our Staff Development, Wellness, and Retention. There were 118 applications received for Correctional Officer positions. We are targeting our Third Quarter Academy to begin in early August. Forty-four interviews were conducted. We are preparing to transition to a new use of force protocol known as TAP, or the Tactical Athlete Program. The TAP approach is more holistic and emphasizing de-escalation. Techniques are not based on pain compliance, and it emphasizes officer health and fitness. Our first TAP instructors completed their training in June, and our first TAP classes for our staff are scheduled for July. Ten staff members utilized the Wellness and Retention Office, and three staff members were referred to external mental health resources. A financial education class through Voya was offered to our staff on June 10th and 11th, and work is beginning on a plan for a Corrections Wellness Fair to be held on September Turning to other noteworthy items, we successfully intervened in a plot to introduce drugs into the facility, and in doing so, confirmed a scenario that we have suspected existed for the past few years. In this case, an inmate who had recently been released concealed drugs in a body cavity and then intentionally got arrested for trespassing and refusing to leave a local business. Due to the ongoing criminal investigation, I cannot provide more details regarding the plot or how we uncovered it at this time. And every so often, I think it's important for me to remind the Board, we talk a lot about mental health, but also just the challenges that we face in caring for all sorts of illnesses and conditions for folks that have become into our custody. And while we always have complex medical cases, we had a pretty significant spike in the complexity of those recently, and I just wanted to highlight a few of them for you. Age 73, cardiac disease, arthritis, and with a hold for mental health. Age 71, cardiac disease. He was transferred from the hospital because he was too unstable for surgery. Age 39, required a hysterectomy. Another age 39 required gallbladder surgery. Age 83, cardiac disease, diabetes, and symptoms of dementia. Age 40, congestive heart failure, noncompliant with oxygen use, and is being held for a competency evaluation due to severe mental illness. Age 51 had very difficult to manage glaucoma. Age 34 swallowed a toothbrush, well in our custody, and spent several days in the hospital and was placed on a constant watch for self-harm. Age 73, congestive heart failure and diabetes. Age 34, diabetes, heart cardiac disease, and requires an amputation. Age 52, liver failure, chronic alcohol dependence, and hypertension. Age 22, a paraplegic with chronic unhealed wounds. And age 25, a high-risk pregnancy, and eight other women who are also pregnant. We had all these folks in our custody at the same time in June. I'd like to extend my gratitude to our medical and custody teams, who work together on literally dozens of individuals with complex medical and mental health conditions each month. It is truly a team effort, and all involved should be commended. With that, Commissioners, I'm ready for any questions.
Thank you, Director Myers. And Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you for this. As we talk about every month, I wanted to go through some of the metrics here. I believe you said your average daily population for the month was 1,105, which is up slightly, 34 over the previous month. That's still, you know, relatively stable population. I think we maybe got below 1,000 sometime earlier this year, but August is usually a tough month, so we'll be interested to see what we have next month. You have a staffing of about 99% overall, which is excellent. And the minority-majority population, I believe 65% represents about the same that we've had for some time. Again, a troubling figure in an overwhelmingly white community where we have 65% plus minorities locked up every month. Interesting number on the pretrial release, and I find this metric very important. So with the programs that we've got for diversion and pretrial release and stuff, you've estimated, and this is good, that we've saved the county 4,633 bed days. That's people who would have been in our correction center being paid for by property tax dollars if they hadn't have been diverted or released for some other reason. And you extrapolate from that, that that's a savings to the county of $787,610, correct?
Correct.
And you do that by applying basically a per diem to those bed days, right?
Correct.
So I think that that's an important metric for us to be aware of going forward and expanding these programs to make people who aren't really a clear and present danger to the community, not residents of the correction center, at a kind of expensive cost to the property taxpayers of Douglas County. So I wanted to thank you for this report, and I appreciate all the hard work you and the folks at Corrections are doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Borgeson.
Thank you. Mike, can you just, it's amazing to me when you read through the other complex medical issues that you all have to deal with, but I'm really flabbergasted when we start looking at age 83 without revealing name or anything like that. What were these folks that were 83, 73, 71, 73 brought in for?
Commissioner, I don't have that committed to memory, but I can tell you that I am aware, and I can't remember which one is which, but there was at least one assault on a healthcare worker. There was one, I believe, that was a domestic violence-related incident. Other than that, I can, I, you know, I have the identifying information for these folks, so I can send you that offline.
Okay.
And so you can see what led to these unfortunate circumstances.
And with that, could you maybe give a historical perspective? Because across the country, we're seeing the aging population of those both in county jails and in prisons. And I guess I'm just a little bit, I'm actually kind of shocked. I just don't remember that many at one time with the serious, complex medical issues being in our custody. So could you maybe go back and just, you know, give us a graph of, and keep watch going forward about that aging population that we're seeing within our jail? And then, I mean, the age 22, a paraplegic, I'd be curious as to information on that one. And then, were there literally eight pregnant women at the same time in our jail, or was that spread over a course of
No. It was nine, including the one, the high-risk one that I listed separately. We had our Health Services Administrator, we do a weekly call where we go over all of the high-risk medical people with my command team and the medical leadership, and she made note that we've opened a maternity ward, it seemed. But, so we have nine, we had nine pregnant females at the same time, including one with a very high-risk situation.
And I guess that would be another thing to watch as well. But again, those, the aging population, I really have concerns because, as you all know, the population in general is aging, and it's taking a toll again on county jails and prisons across the country. And obviously, we're right in the thick of seeing that increase, and so I'd like to monitor that.
We have actually been starting to kick around the idea of opening up their own special unit.
Yep.
Now, we might have to wait for the mental health addition to be completed.
Right.
To be able to find a space to dedicate.
Right.
But it's becoming prevalent enough that we have started the kind of informal discussions of kicking around ideas about creating a special program just for the aged population.
Well, I would be interested in that conversation because I've had those conversations on a national level, and would be very interested in being a part of that discussion.
We'll bring you into the discussions.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Commissioner. And anyone else present or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Director's Report? Seeing none, thank you, Mike. I think we have no need for executive session. Do I have a motion and a second to adjourn? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Kavanaugh. Please vote.
Ma'am, Mr.
This is from Corrections, not the Board.
Did I say the Board of Commissioners?
Well, you just said motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
But I was going to say, and we've done this before with no issues, we could do this as adjourning as a Board of Corrections, and at the same time reconvening as a Board of Commissioners. Is that okay with the maker?
Yes.
Okay. And then, I am so sorry, who, was it Commissioner Morgan and Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Commissioner Morgan and Commissioner Kavanaugh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
All right. Please vote whenever you're ready. Thank you. Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And we do have, in the Board of Commissioners, we do have a need for an executive session today to deal with contract negotiations and legal advice, correct? Do I have a motion and a second to go into executive session? Motion by Commissioner Morgan?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Borgeson? Please vote.
Contracts and legal advice.
Contracts and legal advice.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Clerk. The board will now go into executive session for the purposes of contract negotiations and legal advice.
...